I would like to move to move the election of officers to the end of the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion from charity to move the election of officers to the last item before adjournment. And a second from Corey. Is there any discussion about that motion? Are there any other items on the agenda that need to be addressed for the order? Okay, so the motion is to adopt the agenda with the one amendment of moving the election to the last business item. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, the motion carries. All received the minutes last week, any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, motion by Corey for approval of the minutes as printed. Second from Alan, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes as stated, signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Is there anybody in the audience tonight? That wishes to offer any public comment that has not signed up for the public comment list? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Well, let me backtrack. Steve Ferlato, are you here for one of the agenda items or something different?
I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I'm going to talk about Hanks Chapel Road.
For the rezone Chatham Park? Okay, and Mark Keelit?
Thank you.
Same, okay, thank you. Okay, is there any old business to come before us tonight? Seeing none, we'll move into new business. Again, the election is going to be put back to a later time. So the first agenda item for us is PB 24-509, the Womble tract conditional rezoning.
Good evening, Director, and I guess Merry Christmas, a little bit early. And stand about right there. Me playing. Okay, so I wanted to point out to you all tonight, first item in front of you is the Highcroft Investors and Rainier LLP, a petition to have 122 acres of land, parcels 7310, 7311, 75046, 73, I won't say that's repeat, 7310, 70324, and 7506 currently zoned RA, RA2, and R12 to be reclassified as CMUC CZ, which is a conditional mixed-use conditional zoning district. And the property of Butts Chatham Park's PDD will largely mirror the neighboring property in terms of land uses and intensity.
The wrong, yeah.
We got the wrong number. Sorry, sorry kids, we'll get to that in a second. There we go. Nice and big we have, okay. So this is the property that is in question. There is a report in your packet that includes the conditions for this particular conditional rezoning. We have the petitioners here, and I'm going to yield the floor in just a minute. I wanted to point out that the intention is to put up to 840 residential dwelling units. That's on the first page of the conditions that are in your packet. Eight hundred and forty. Minimum non-residential square footage is 350,000 square feet. There's a table for the standards and the setbacks. Recreational requirements of portions of property use for residential uses will be satisfied by providing 1/33 of an acre dwelling per dwelling unit in the form of public park and land dedication and/or land dedication for greenway, minimum width of 30 feet, including existing greenway easements and/or land dedication for any portion of a minimum 10-foot wide multi-use path that is outside of the street right of way and/or payment and lieu. I did want to point out that the affordable housing item here, which is number six under the general conditions, mirrors the Chatham Park affordable housing plan additional element. And one of the changes from our recent ordinances is actually found in the landscaping screening buffers and parking in which we are asking in the case of townhouses for there to be two vehicle parking spaces per dwelling unit plus half a space per unit for gas, which is an increase of .25. That was recently approved. There is a list of the principal uses, anything that you see in red is a special use permit. And then there's an accessory uses and structures that are on the second list. I'm going to have the petitioner go over that a little bit more. And the only other thing I'm going to draw your attention to is that the street sections that are proposed are actually included in your packet as well. Brian may or may not be getting ready to turn to the street sections. Well. Yeah, it is. Ah, there you are. So, yeah, this particular set of, yeah, that and the next one down is the street sections that are proposed. And probably the most important changes on the Collector Street, assuming it is the Collector Street, there's a potential 10-foot multi-use trail on one side of the road and then the typical five-foot sidewalk on the other, which is what you see in the top drawing there. They did hold a community meeting, and there were not a lot of attendees. There's a report about the community meeting, and there's a consistency statement attached to the back. And at this point, I'm going to yield the floor to the petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Kuhon Tingle. Mr. Chairman and Planning Board members, I'm Patrick Bradshaw. I practice law on 128 Hillsborough Street in Pittsburgh. I'm struggling with my voice tonight, I apologize for that. If I become inaudible, if you'll just let me know, I'll try to boost it up. So I am here tonight representing the applicant on this request. As the director said, we're talking about, could you give the map of the Womble property back up, Mr. Paul? As the director said, this is a 22 and a half acres of land. It's bounded on the east and the west by the Chatham Park PDD, on the southwest by Pittsburgh Christian Village, on the north by US Highway 64 bypass. And then there are a few single-family residences on the south across what are significant stream buffers, repairing buffers that we're proposing to make wider than would otherwise be required. We are requesting that it be rezoned to a community mixed-use center conditional zoning district with an overall density limited to 840 dwelling units and 350,000 square feet of non-residential uses. We actually, as Mr. Kuhon Tingle said, we had a community meeting, but we actually ended up having about three. The portion of the property that was owned by the Womble family had some title challenges. And so we kept getting near bringing this to you all in different configurations. So we ended up having three community meetings, had about the same handful of people show up each time, and nobody expressed any concerns or criticisms of the rezoning that we were seeking. Mostly interested in what was going on on the surrounding properties. We submitted this application in October. Since then, the staff has made detailed comments on the application, the proposed conditions, and we've worked with them to resolve any conditions there, including eliminating some of the proposed uses and increasing the parking for townhomes, as the director said. And as you're aware, the staff has recommended approval. Or recommended that you recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners. In my mind, the most important thing that the planning board does in evaluating requests like this is to evaluate whether the proposal is consistent with the town's land use plan. This particular property is shown as traditional neighborhood infill on the future land use map. Property's location aligns with the land use plan's vision for traditional neighborhood infill because it's close to a mixed-use activity center at the intersection of US Highway 64 Bypass and Chatham Parkway and adjacent to an employment mixed-use area along Chatham Parkway. The proposed mix of uses for the property will support compact design with a variety of housing types and uses, pedestrian-oriented building and street design. The potential uses include single-family residences and high-density housing such as apartments and condos near commercial areas with good access to collector streets and pedestrian facilities. The development will maintain the scale and character of established neighborhoods while allowing a flexible range of housing types and infill development along with office and commercial uses in suitable areas consistent with the land use plan's goals. The future land use map also recommends open space along the streams on the eastern and southern boundaries of the property. To enhance this, the applicant is proposing to voluntarily double the required riparian buffers on those streams from 50 feet to 100 feet. The proposed conditional rezoning aligns with the land use and housing recommendations in the land use plan as well. It will facilitate identification and removal of regulatory barriers to mixed-use development. The conditional rezoning will allow a development plan that may include multifamily townhomes, duplexes, and a range of single-family lot sizes. It will encourage a mix of housing types in new development. And the portion of the property that is further from the town center, further to the east, will have a lower density of residential dwelling units per acre than the area that's adjacent to the employment mixed-use area along Chatham Parkway. The portion of the property closer to downtown and adjacent to the employment mixed-use area will have a higher density. Here with me tonight is Robbie Oldham, who is the engineer for the project. I'm going to ask him to come up and point out a few things particulars about the site to you and the proposed infrastructure improvements. And we would respectfully request that you all accept the recommendation of the staff and recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Before you have a seat, Mr. Bradshaw, any specific questions for Mr. Bradshaw at this point?
Not yet.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Robbie.
Good evening, everyone. Robbie Oldham, where they're driving in on behalf of the applicants. Good to see everybody. So what I'd like to do is just give a little bit of, maybe almost like a little Chatham Park update in this area and just background and some context for this area so you can understand. I think everybody knows where our location is. As you see on the screen, this is a Chatham Park and Luster, this latest one that we generated. It shows this particular rezoning case outlined in the blue. So I think it's important, I know it's probably tough to see this, but the key to me on this is you've got the UNC Health. There you go, that's perfect. You've got UNC Health site, the 43 and a half acre site right beside that. That's within Chatham Park. They purchased that property November of last year. I believe they're working on site plans, and I believe they're going to be looking at starting construction in the next year. So that's, you know, they've got their own engineers and planners working on that. But I know when we met with staff, we've had multiple meetings with staff on this. I know some of the staff members, you know, they're getting excited, say you've got a UNC campus there. They're looking at building up to 700,000 square feet there. So if you look, Patrick already has hit on the land use plan. If you look at this, with this being the traditional neighborhood infill, I mean, if you read a description of that, I mean, this is exactly what we're proposing to do. It's a mix of residential, single-family townhomes, apartments. But then I think, you know, the way this sets up, we don't know what's going here yet. But the way it was set up is that it would be, you know, then you're probably looking at maybe some offices that would serve, you know, this health campus as it develops over the years. So that's the reason we're coming in with this mixed use that Patrick had described. With that, you know, if you look at the community mixed use, it allows up to 20 dwelling units per acre. And of course, we're not looking at that, but how we got to the 840 max on the residential units in the 350,000 square feet, you know, just a rough calculation, you know, if you took, say, this is 122 acres. If you took 105 acres at eight dwelling units per acre, that gives you your 840. So the idea is that if this developed eight units per acre, that would give you that. That would be higher density. If this is single-family or in townhomes, it would be less, you know, you're looking at four to five. Again, if this apartments, then you're looking higher density, it just gives the flexibility which is allowed. It's less than half of what's allowed in the UDO for conditional mixed-use center. And just to give you a frame of reference, 122 at 20 dwelling units per acre would be over 2,400 units. And of course, you know, we're not looking at anything like that, so. Sorry, if you'll go to the next one. Oh, actually, stay there, I'm sorry. Talk about Chatham Parkway real quick, then you can zoom all the way out. I know most of you, we've given some updates on Chatham Parkway, the DOT project. So if you look here, just to give a quick update on that, this is the DOT project that's under construction. It's built, as of today, is built up to Grant Drive. And I don't know if you can kind of put your personally, I will grant it drives that. It's right there in the kind of the front door of the Astoria Future Development, yep, right there. So Chatham Parkway is built up to there right now. I think they're looking at, you know, having that completed next year, I'm guessing next summer. Along the same timeframe, we're, the DOT is looking at starting the construction from the remaining Grant Drive out to 15501 North. So that will start next spring and be completed, I believe it's in 2027. So you're looking at now having Chatham Parkway completed in, say, over two years from Christian Village or Saturday all the way out to 15501 North. That's the B project, if you will. So it will be basically extend from Grant Drive up to 15501. So I guess my point is, you know, when you look at that road and then that opening up and just this whole corridor, and then you come back and you see UNC Health Campus again, is looking to start construction sometime next year. Then that sets up this, you know, the infrastructure's there. I'm also showing the two red errors there. Those are existing full-access locations along Chatham Parkway. So you can drive out there today, and you can see that those turnouts are there. UNC Health at the, right across from Windover Parkway there, they will have a full-access location there as well. So this site is essentially being served by three full-access points along Chatham Parkway. Of course, that's all per DOT, their designs. Yes, the allows for the correct spacing that works with a Chatham Parkway design-type road, so.
Excuse me, Rob. Will there be access to this parcel from the east, from U-Banks? Will there be access into here from the bank?
It is a FEMA MAP stream.
Okay.
So we're, and that's a good point, I know Patrick hit on this. The string feature to the south, that is a FEMA MAP stream, and the one to the east is a FEMA MAP stream. So that's, we're not looking at any crossings there. And actually, that's where we're proposing to double the buffer so it's consistent with Chatham Park. So they would be 100-foot buffers, 200-foot total, which is double what the town requires. So, but that's a good question. And of course, no access to the north because 64 bypass, that's a controlled access. Okay, we'll go to the next one. So just real quick on the permitting uses, CMUC allows for up to 76 principal uses. We've worked closely with staff, and we basically reduced that to 48. So just to be more selective, this is conditional rezoning. So that's what reduced it by over a third, if you will. Patrick's already hit on the repairing buffers. Like I said, you can see this, we're doubling the repairing buffers on, or proposing to double the repairing buffers on the southern stream and the eastern stream. And then you can see the two access roads in white. That would be basically just the idea of where these access roads will access Chatham Park. One of the recent changes, as of last week, I think, we'll meet with staff. We agreed to adding a multi-use trail on one side to get back out of Chatham Parkway. So, and I think I'll end on what, I mean, what I would think is exciting if I'm looking at this. It's really just the walkability, the multi-use and the greenways that will be serving this area. So if you see this magenta pink, you know, lines, Chatham Parkway with the DOT project, they're proposing 10, two 10-foot multi-use trails on the outside. And when that gets filled, you can talk to DOT about that, but they have committed to doing that. And part of that, the history of this, DOT in the past have looked at having bike lanes within travelway. And I think there's been, well, I know there's been a transition to get the bike lanes and have out of the travelways and do multi-use on both sides. In the past, I've, you know, been doing this a while, DOT never did that. So having DOT build these 10-foot multi-use along Chatham Parkway is, I mean, is awesome. And that's going to be all the way, we'll talk a little bit more later, all of Chatham Parkway, you got the multi-use. The green lines you see, that is proposed greenways. The one to the west of Chatham Parkway on the left side of your screen, that is already designed and approved by the town. That we just got to get it constructed, so that greenway is approved and done. And then we, as part of developments, Chatham Park develops, and as this project develops, we will extend the greenway on the south, as you see in this picture. So, and then we're, we have even talked to the town about the multi-use that will go, whether it's multi-use or greenway on, you know, that goes up U-Bank Road, that's to be determined, but that's the ultimate plan to show how this, all this will be connected and then connectivity with the, and a lot of people's assets. So if you get a house feel there, you get apartments there, single-family or townhomes, and you've got that access, walkability, bike and whatever with this area and ties into the rest of Chatham Park and the town's greenway, most of the new system. So be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Robbie?
Robbie, do you have an idea of how much of this 122 acres is going to be residential versus how much will be commercial?
We don't, but I'll just give you my thoughts on it. It feels like if you were to extend the line where the point is, it just comes straight down, that to me sets up, that will be kind of your residential area. And then it feels like then you're going to transition from the residential to some type of office going back out to Chatham Parkway, if that makes sense.
So to the left of that line coming straight down?
Right.
If you were. Commercial or would be the residential?
No, the bulk of every.
Bulk would be residential.
Exactly. We just don't know, but I think if, just looking at land plans and looking at, you know, how things have developed, I think what you would have is the residential away from Chatham Parkway. And then as you're going, getting closer to Chatham Parkway, that's where you would have office or medical office and things like that.
My concern is without kind of that breakdown, it's hard to gauge if this is in line with the future land use plan of traditional neighborhood infill. I was just reading the description of traditional neighborhood infill, and it says comprised of primarily single-family residential uses with house-scale multifamily and townhomes permitted. So, and then I'm looking at the list of permitted uses, and there's a lot of commercial uses listed. So I'm having a hard time being comfortable with this being converted and not knowing, you know, just blindly saying that these, any of these uses could go in there without knowing if it's going to follow traditional neighborhood infill.
And with the rezoning, we just don't know right now. So, I mean, I know you knew that, so, but I think we've eliminated the ones that the town, it concerns with, at least, you know, town staff. So, but it gives you the flexibility. And I guess going back to the CMUC, I mean, we've eliminated what I think is like 30-some uses out of there, so.
Yeah.
I hear you, and I guess if you read the.
Yeah.
If you read a description of that traditional info, I mean, this is, this almost sets up exactly what we're proposing to do there.
Yeah.
I know without having, you know, that we're doing this residential here, this, and we just don't know. But I'll be glad to turn it over to Patrick if you have another answer, so, but.
It's just that, like, primarily is where I'm struggling.
I was saying, can I ask the, really the same question and stuff? And then kind of on top of that and stuff. So if you're saying it looks like maybe a fifth at best or whatever is going to be commercial, any idea on which is going to come first? Like, so if you're going to be, you said more low-density towards the east, right? High-density residential towards the commercial? And any idea of the order of operations in terms of are going to be building on commercial properties first or what they're going to be are office buildings first?
I can't answer that, but it would be, it's just market-driven, so, I mean, I just. I think to me, once the UNC Health and their site and it starts, then you're going to see people looking saying, okay, oh, yeah, you know, let's look at a medical office or, you know, in use in here. So, and that's what we're trying to allow with this rezoning work. And this joins Chatham Park, we're trying to make this seamless, so it allows basically just that develop to be a transition to go from that mixed use into the residential.
And I don't have anything really particularly different to say, except that I would point out that the traditional neighborhood infill is not solely residential. It does anticipate transition, and this, as Robbie's pointing out, is a perfect site for a transition from the more dense and commercial uses on the western portion of the property going to what will inevitably be more residential as you go more to the east. As Robbie said, I can't stand here and guarantee you exactly what's going to be where. But I feel like at the end of the day, if your concern is you want to, because of traditional neighborhood infill, you want more residential on this property rather than less, I don't think you're going to be disappointed with the final outcome.
Yeah, mine follows along the same lines. I mean, I'm sitting here questioning why there would need to be a research laboratory on this property and then also a helipad.
Helipads only.
Yeah, but is not UNC going to have their own helipad?
I don't know, but it's only an accessory use, so it's not, you can't go out and make an airport. It would have to be.
I understand that.
To a medical use.
Understand that, but still, you're landing a helicopter within, we don't know how close to residential property.
I'm not sure I consider that a negative thing, but.
Well, if it's too close, no, I understand. I mean, I am, you know, supportive of medical facilities, and when you're using a helicopter, every second counts. But you also want to factor in a measure of safety. And that's why I don't, I'm not understanding if there needs to be a helipad for the UNC facility there, why it's not on the top of their facility.
Well, first of all, it would only be for UNC facility if UNC acquired some portion of this property. Because we're only assessing uses for this property.
That's what I was waiting to hear.
So, and I don't, I don't have any idea whether that's in the plans or in the cards or not, but it could only be an accessory use to a use on this property. It couldn't be an independent freestanding heliport.
Understand, but.
And I have a hard time imagining that you're going to end up with two heliports right beside each other.
Yeah. But I'd still like to know where the one, where the one heliport's going to be and why it would not be on UNC property as it's outlined here.
You know, one way to think about this is that the market and sort of natural processes are going to guide what gets into, what ends up being developed where. And the more intense uses that are adjacent to this property are obviously to the west. You're going to have that UNC property, you've got an employment center on the land use plan along Chatham Parkway. So you're, you're much more likely to have commercial-related uses on that western portion of the property, transitioning out to residential uses on probably what will be the bulk of the property to the east.
And the research laboratory, any additional information on that?
Oh, yeah, I don't have any particular insight into it. I mean, we went through the list of uses in CMUC and eliminated over 30 of them.
Understand, but I also have a concern about the residents living there and what sort of research could potentially go on.
The two gentlemen from the, from the audience that signed up to speak, Steve and Mark, are you specific to the next project or this one, or both?
Actually, both. The next project is closely to our practice. But I also want a speech in general to what's been happening.
Okay, okay, sit tight just a minute. And any other questions right now for, for Mr. Bradshaw or Oldham? Thank you. Okay, Mr., I'm sure I'm going to butcher your name, Ferlato?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, go ahead and come forth, please, and if you could, try to limit your comments to three minutes. State your address, please.
Stephen Ferlato, I live on 323 Hanks Chapel Road, right amongst the projects that you're talking about. I've lived there for about 10 years, and I came here to retire. This has not been a good place to locate. It feels like we're absorbing all the infrastructure from the Chatham Park project, and it's becoming real cumbersome. I have about 700 feet of frontage. And it's becoming real cumbersome. Um, I have about seven hundred feet of frontage on Hanks Chapel Road. Um, first thing I want to talk about is Friday night, I unfortunately had to work through the night. And at three AM, uh, I hear an explosion and the sky lights up and it takes out my computer. I, I'm right, I'm catty cornered to the sub, the new substation. Then I hear three more explosions with the sky lighting up. And uh, you know, this isn't fun. I don't know what's going on. I probably should have called nine one one, but I figured with the, the substation would be watched. So I don't know what those explosions are. And it bothers me. Um, the substation is really ugly. Um, it's lit up at night like a football field. I no longer can see the stars. As I said, I came out here to retire and look at the stars. So I'm not happy about that. Um. The Chatham Park project in general, I'm excited about it, but I think they need to be good neighbors. And I don't mean to be, I don't know if it's Chatham Park or other developers. But I think the developers have to be good neighbors and take us into consideration. We've been asking, there's about an acre of land in front of the substation. We've been asking if that's going to be planted. Um, I just planted three Green Giant Arbivide today to try to block the view. I'd rather Duke use their money to block the view than we use my money. So there's a lot of things like that going on. Um, they put in new wires, you know, new telephone poles, higher wires. The old poles have been there for over two years now. Remove the old poles, you know, be nice to us. When, when they can do something for the neighborhood, they should. And it doesn't seem to be happening that way. Um, I wanted to talk about, do we have any of the maps up? There, where um, where Eubanks is going to come across East Street and into Hanks Chapel Road. Um, I've been speaking to neighbors and so far, everybody's been in agreement that we would like to see the Hanks Chapel Road west of Eubanks um, be a dead end road so that you're accessing it from the new. So instead of accessing it from East Street, that little crazy cat corner, we block that off. We need to slow traffic down. Already the traffic is dangerous. A lot of people, especially me, I'm a boat nut. I moved here because of the lake. Um, a lot of people are pulling boats along that road. And I'm pulling into a driveway ninety degrees with sometimes twenty-seven foot rolling shelves on my, on my roof. And it's really dangerous. I've been hit almost a, a number of times. Um, we have a hobby, my neighbor and I, of pulling people out of the ditch. Um, I don't know why they drive so fast. Except Hanks Chapel Road is really pretty. And uh, I think they like driving fast on it. We need to slow them down. So whatever happens on the intersection of Eubanks coming into Hanks Chapel should take that, the, the traffic speed into consideration.
Okay, sorry to interrupt, Mr. Ferlato. Uh, we will call you back again for the second project. Some of your comments may be the same. Uh, but we'll allow you three more minutes at that time.
That's good. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hewitt, you, uh, you want to speak on this one or the next one? Thank you. Okay. Okay, uh, comments, pleasure of the board.
Um, I've just pulled up CMUC zoning. And I wanted to share the purpose of the Community Mixed Use Center District is to provide lands to accommodate moderate and higher intensity auto-accessible development that is appropriate for highway commercial areas and that serve the town and region. And I'm struggling here because to me that does not, that's not congruent with our future land use plan of traditional neighborhood infill. Um, it's a little too high density and commercial in just like side by side with these descriptions. Um, to see that it's like really fitting into what the land was intended for. So that's where I'm at. And that's.
I'm glad, I'm glad Charity brought up the whole traditional infill. Uh, I was looking at that too the last few days. Uh. It's going to be, in my opinion, way more relevant on the next project we're going to look at here in a few minutes. Uh, the one closer to the Hanks Chapel uh, audience. Uh, you know, you know, you know, this one. This one is effectively surrounded with the exception of the creek on the south by Chatham Park. So I understand that traditional infill, it if we're looking at traditional infill sort of uh, with respect to what's around it, it does fit a little better in the Chatham Park mode. Uh, and that's, you know, that's, that's just my opinion on that. Uh, one thing that was was and continues to be a concern for me is when we get this level of density. And, you know, Mr. Oldham did explain that it's not as dense as it could be. But we are, you know, we are fast, you know, paving our watershed. Right now, this property is zoned as Charity says for RA and an RA twelve and uh uh, there's three zonings on it. I forget what the others, what the, uh, uh, RA two, RA, R twelve and R. Uh, so it's just kind of a dilemma. Where do we, you know, how far can we let this go? Where do we stop? Okay, Mr. Director.
So I was going to say for actually for this town, uh, R twelve is the second most dense you can possibly get.
Mm-hmm.
The other um detail that um might have been helpful in my introduction, but let's just pick it up where I didn't do it before. Uh, they've mentioned it before, but I perhaps should have been a little bit more clear when I was giving my particular piece. Um, when you are doing a conditional zoning versus a regular straight zoning that is not conditional, that does not have conditions, if somebody was just doing CMUC, which is a zoning district just the same way that commercial highway is a zoning district. If you were doing that, as uh, Mr. Bradshaw pointed out.
A hundred uses?
Okay, there would be about a hundred uses, hundred and, he gave the number. So basically, what's happened on this table of uses, the principal table and the other table, is that the one hundred plus uses for um, principal uses, and then the accessory uses, which is a whole different table in the UDO, was pared down. So part of the pairing down that occurs is the staff and the petitioner get together and go over the list of items that we consider to be less than desirable. We removed um, a crematorium, for an example. We removed a um, I actually think this one has all the funeral services removed. Um, we certainly removed um the ability to have a place where you are um, just simply running a storage yard for vehicles. Um, we um, certainly wanted to eliminate, like I said, things like bars and nightclubs and um, that sort of thing. Um, again, with the idea that once you pair the list down, the modifications to that particular zoning district and i- in some ways to the land use plan itself are justified by the conditions that are actually set up here. If you come in and you just want to do a straight rezoning, if Corey was here and he was just straight up rezoning CMUC, we would talk to him about a mixture of uses, but we would also give him a list of a hundred things to pick from. We wouldn't be telling him about the need for uh, affordable housing. We wouldn't be driving the idea that we're going to uh, accept money instead of um, open space or recreation. Uh, we wouldn't really be having a conversation uh, in which we taught him exactly how many square feet of commercial that were going to be happening over there. And we would not be talking to them about reduced setback lines and every one of the standards that you see on this particular site. These are not the standards that normally go with that particular district. So this is essentially a um, a negotiation in which you remove uses that you don't want on the site. What we were shooting for in the multiple, and I believe Mr. Bradshaw said it was um, three, three or more meetings. I'm a little confused on how many we did. It was a lot. He's saying three. Was we were trying to honor the uses that are in the PDD. Because um, this, this case is a lo, it's similar. It's, I don't think I would call it the same. But it's similar to the White property down here with a Comet. Um, it's affordable and um, and, and market rate apartments are actually going. There was a strip of land that belonged to the Whites. It was um, purchased after the fact. And then the uses in the centerpiece had to match the others enough that they would blend seamlessly. And actually, if you see the plans for Comet apartments, which are actually um, at some phase of development, it's my belief they're either under construction or we, we're in the process of getting construction drawing approval. Um, but in that particular case, we had to find enough similarities between the strip in the middle with these other strips. So that when you relax the property lines, you weren't having to reopen and renegotiate a PDD. You were simply making them similar enough that it was a nice blend. In this particular case, the idea, um, i- if it was not obvious, but I, I'm, I'm going to put in the work here and I'm going to make it very obvious. Um, some of these uses like family care home and group, group home and congregate living and continual care, retirement facility and the um, you know, vocational schools, which would include potentially a community uh, college um, school that would be structured specifically to nursing or one of the specialties that UNC would have over there. Emergency services, if you've been to a hospital recently and you're wondering where the heck they store the ambulances, that'd be where they are. Um, also, um, the rest of this stuff, theater, bed and breakfast. Um, the research thing, I'm going to stay off of, but um, we start thinking about either working in close proximity to there, which would make you want a microbrewery. Or indoor/outdoor uh, theater or in entertainment near there, office buildings, of course, restaurants, because you're going to have to have a place to eat when you're at the hospital. You can't cram every single bit of that on the UNC site. They're talented, but they're not that talented. So with that in mind, let me say that this is essentially a checklist of what you could potentially put in close proximity to there. Hoping that there's only going to be one heliport, but who can say? Um, and then, of course, we went through what was a little bit more important to us as a staff, was going through the accessory uses. Because uh, as um, I don't think we stated, but it'd be a real good time to tell you now because we have another one of these coming up in just a minute. The accessory uses, the assumption is that the primary use has got to be on the property before you can add an accessory. So if you start thinking about your own home and the way you might be primarily using your place, and then you think that you may want to add some of these sorts of things in the yard of your house or on the same property as your house, if you were the UNC health system, then I believe you can see the value of some of this. I think as confusing and frustrating as you all may be finding uh, wrapping your hat around this particular list, I would like you to bear in mind the frustration and the potential for uh, what we felt was um a poor reaction from the public to the actual initial list, which was a hundred items on the primary uses and I couldn't guess how many were accessory, but it was a bunch, it was fifty or more. So about a hundred and fifty uses. This is the whittling down and the distillation of that. Um, please remember, staff does not write and then hope that the petitioner uh, likes what we wrote. They write theirs. We get together, we talk about it, and then we send it through this process for you all to give them the feedback that they may not have gotten at their own meeting, what they may or may not have gotten from the staff. And just to let you know how long I've been here, I'm going to say that the Womble property was off the table when I first got here. And so the addition of the Womble property happened during my time here. So let me just say, um, obviously, looking at our interpretation of land use plan and, and I don't want to make this meeting go on any longer than it has to, but at our interpretation of land use plan, and particularly we'll go to the uh, staff uh, proposal in the back. We felt that it satisfied the criteria outlined in the UDO. Um, most particularly, we felt it was consistent in the sense that it, the area was designated for traditional neighborhood infill. But my question was, if I'm marrying traditional infill into Chatham Park, it's not the same thing as traditional infill in the area around this building we're standing, or in my case, standing, your case, sitting. But the point is, we're physically dwelling in a building that um, these uses probably would be inappropriate for. Um, I did want to mention that the uh, in their case, the Good Faith Gesture was providing a diverse number of housing choices by including single-family and higher density. Again, the idea to my mind is if you are working in the healthcare field, and I, and I, and I did do that work for a very brief part of my incredibly long life. Um, as I'm informed so often by my own staff. But um, let me just say, I would like a bed to lay my head on fairly close to where I work. Um, that isn't my current circumstances, but what I'm saying is part of the housing choices and the diversity we were trying to put together and some of the pedestrian and um, bicycle and non-motorized options were things that were, we were trying to keep in mind with reducing the uh dependency on cars and making it a place where you could work and live and recreate, recreate, being physical recreation also being um, I think the brew pub comes into some folks' recreation. I don't think that helped a bit, but it was a great speech for December.
Yeah, I think I'd just like to, I would just like to say that um, based on the location of the property being on the highway, if you look at the list that the staff and applicant have kind of pared down to, I, I don't think that any of, any of those uses would would feel entirely out of place in that, in that area.
If there are uh, if there's any specific use or uses in this table that they have pared down to, you know, gives any one of y'all specific heartburn, uh, our motion can be to delete that use if we move forward to approve it. So.
I think I have issue with any of the uses proposed. I think they do all make sense. And I do agree that this, it doesn't make sense for this land to remain RA. Um, I do think it should be some kind of transitional. Um, I'm just, it's hard to know when um, we don't know kind of the proportion.
Right.
Of how it will be developed. And I understand that you can't predict that.
Let me, while I was listening over here, because I can't help but do that, I'm supposed to be paying attention. Um, but when I was listening over here, the one thing I was going to point out is the ability to do something or to include something does not make it a foregone conclusion. It's going to arrive there.
Right.
Um, I had a um, I think an eight and a half year uh, stint in a place where we were waiting for a Walmart, the whole eight and a half years I was there. And the site was sort of blessed to be a Walmart and people would, you know, sort of the Walmart lovers in the house were kind of touching their hand over their heart when they saw the site. And um, I was up in that area as recently as about seven weeks ago and that Walmart's still not there. I started there in two thousand nine. So let me say, um, simply because you can doesn't mean that someone's going to. Sometimes it doesn't make economic sense. I'm going to say that when the UNC um, medical facility is in place, um, it, it didn't take any imagination on my part at all to see restaurants and offices and a transit stop or a parking deck or um, e- even a vet hospital, because if you've ever had a sick pet and had to drop them off on your way to or from work, that's quite frustrating. Um, a daycare center, again, unless you're childless or don't want any kids, uh, that's in a lot of people's minds. It takes up a significant amount of money. Place of worship, same story, public park, same story. The reason why schools, in case you're wondering, actually require a special use permit is the stacking lanes for uh, dropping kids off and also the security needs of the school itself. You know, when I went back, when I went to school back in the day when we were still living in caves, uh, the school was wide open and it was quite a community amenity. And now it's more like a minimum security prison in the sense that getting on and off of the place is pretty tough. Um, again, bike racks and public art and garages and a car wash and a place to put drive-through facilities and as we were talking on the phone, we had had quite a few conversations about um, internet and high-speed internet and the things that have to happen nowadays. Um, I would like you all to remember, in fact, when you go home tonight, I'd like you to look around your living room or in your house, maybe around your bedroom, and I'd like you to count the number of uh, objects in your house that use the internet. I have thirteen Wi-Fi uh, capable things, including my stuff. So let me just say, um, the internet was a novelty in nineteen eighty-four when I got it and it's a necessity today in twenty twenty-four. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, in, in, kind of similar to the things that we've said before and stuff, it, it's difficult with, uh, we, we looked at kind of the map and stuff and maybe um, that small percentage, which to me looked like best a fifth, maybe a sixth of a hundred and twenty-two acres, so twenty acres or twenty-four acres um, to accommodate all of that um, without knowing the distribution as well of the, the mixed use, the townhomes, uh, residential. Um, and less what may or may not be sold to, to, to UNC for a heliport or. And less what may or may not be sold to to UNC for a health ward or laboratories or parking garage. I mean, it's tough to visualize for me, you know, of where we put all that in 20 acres.
But I'm not sure I would say it would all be in that 20 acres.
Oh, I thought I thought they had said kind of the commercial portion was just that.
Rob made the point that he thought that's where most of it, but you know, you're going to have that UNC campus right in there in that corner. So some of that property up in the northern part of the property is going to be sensitive. Those kinds of uses as well.
Be nice to, you know, see that.
And you will add site plan approvals and subdivisions.
If you look, well, this is your screen, I guess. I'm pointing at this one here. I'm not going to, nobody else has another screen to look at. If you imagine that Health Center was there today and you're just one riparian buffer away from the site, which is where you would be. The question for each of you is if you happen to leave that site and enter this property from a different direction. Bearing in mind that the lion's share of this piece over here is going to be residential. The stuff that touches or is very close to the Health Center. It feels like it needs to be pretty high density and it needs to mean something. It needs to have a retail component or a commercial component or an office component down on the first floor or two. And then higher, you can imagine actually living in one of those or having some other. Not so much residential as just a living space or a sleeping space or something.
You know, market forces will ultimately draw those lines.
I was going there.
It's going to transition. I think we could all just be comfortable that logically that's what's going to happen. But I don't think we can sit here tonight in December of 2024 and draw specific lines for where that's going to be. But we will come back with specific lines on site plans and subdivision flats.
Yes.
Specific lines, but percentages are like how much residential versus commercial versus.
You've got to have a line to know where the percent.
Again, that's, that even goes back to what the market, market's going to dictate that.
Yes.
Market could change anytime, so it doesn't really matter how much the percentages are. It could change tomorrow. It could change when we wake up in the morning, it could be completely different. So I, you can't sit here and tell me that it's going to be 50 and tomorrow it may be 75. So we have to go with what we have today. And from what I see is that you're giving us what we asked for, what you've asked for, you've given us what the town have told you, what you wanted. You've taken out things that the town says, take this out. We do absolutely do not want that here. And y'all have obliged to everything that they've asked. And you can't, we can't ask for any more than that. And we can sit here all night long and talk about, well, I want to know a percentage and and that's just not going to happen. So we can either accept what it is and vote on it and go on. Or we can decide that if you don't want to do that, then you say you don't want to do it and and you go on. But we can't, we'll be here till 12 o'clock tonight trying to decide how much a percentage is going to be. And they can't guarantee that for any of us, and and nobody can, can guarantee any of that for us right now.
Yeah, like, like, like Frida said, you know, if if we choose to approve this, send it to the commissioners, it's going to be just a concept. Nothing, you know, we won't have any certainties on any, on any of those. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, you did ask for heartburn, so I'm going to give you two pieces of heartburn. And I do, I still have heartburn about the quote unquote unknown research laboratory. And also that we don't know where the helipad is going to go. I mean, obviously, it's not going to go on the UNC property.
We don't know.
We don't know that.
We have no, we have no idea though.
They're asking for a helipad as part of this.
They're not asking for a helipad, what they're asking, what they're saying is that it's a possibility, it can be. But the hospital more than likely will have the helipad, so that means they won't be having that.
Well, then, then my question is, why are they asking for?
But they're not, they're just saying it's just a use.
You can make a motion that the use was too big.
Let me, before we go there, let me just say this. I recently had an MRI done and the next building in the building that I had an MRI done, and it was done in Raleigh. Anyway, the the building I had it done in next door was labeled a research lab. It was a sleep research lab. They are literally watching people sleep in a bed and then taking information, and it is UNC Health, by the way. The place I went to was next door to a facility just like that. And when they wheeled you out of the one, you went over to the other one. It was the convenience of the center. It makes the center more whatever. And it doesn't necessarily have to be on the campus of the Health Center, because anyone that's been to Duke in the last five years can certainly tell you they've outgrown the original footprint about 400%. So let me say, in my mind, the research facility doesn't have to be that we're researching different ways to make a bomb. It could simply be something that is complementary to a type of research that's being done at that particular site. I also participated in a clinical trial for the COPD medication that I'm on right now. Again, I went to a research center that looked like I was in an office where they sell paper clips. And actually, I was being researched, for real. So not every research center is is sinister. Sometimes it's just people who are asleep or people who need an MRI. Or people who need a breast exam, or people who are getting ready to have a baby and want to go in there and talk to a midwife. So there's an awful lot of different types of research. I I have to say that I am humbled and honored to consider the possibility that I could help bring in something that happened like that here and it affect your lives the way the facilities closest to my house have affected mine. So let me just say that. That's my medical pitch for December.
Pleasure with the board.
Well, I do feel like this needs to be transitional land and I am going to move to approve the conditional rezoning on good faith that it will line up with our future land use plan once it all hashes out.
And I'll second that.
Motion from charity, second from Frida, to approve the conditional rezone. Any further questions or discussion?
Would anyone like to add the consistency statement to it, assuming that you do approve it?
We just need to make an amendment to the motion. All right.
Plan.
Where is it? At the bottom?
On the back page, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, it's the last page of that.
Got it.
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to amend.
Move to approve. Do you want me to read all of this?
No, Lord. No, just the thing on the front page, motion to amend, it has presented in the entire document includes that.
First page.
This document, the whole report is the document.
First page. Thanks.
At the bottom, it says suggested motion, a motion to recommend approval of PB 24.
Last page of this.
Yeah, I'm there, but it.
It's on the very first page of this. You want to say it? He just says the bottom is what he wants you to read.
Yeah.
The last sentence at the very bottom.
That's.
Motion recommend approval of PB 24 509 as presented.
Yeah, and I'll second that we made the amendment to it.
Being inconsistent with the land use plan.
Yes.
All right. So we have a valid motion and second on the floor, consistent with the land use plan and to approve the conditional rezoning. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor for the motion as stated signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, aye. Okay, so Schaefer voted in the negative and did you?
Yeah.
And all others have voted in the affirmative.
Mr. White voted no. Don't have to.
Yeah, I I I think, I think it is not consistent with the traditional infill, as I understand it. And and I'm also following back on on density and the I was going to use the word outsourcing, which is not a good word, but as, you know, we we have so much PDD approved. And a lot of it is very high density. And as these fingers go out, they keep grabbing other pieces of land. And we're going to quickly run out of open space and and land to protect our watershed. That's my justification. So the motion passes five to one.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw.
I'll include your comments.
Thank you.
Pass on to the board.
Okay.
Commissioners.
We are moving on to item PB 24-511, the bland tract conditional rezoning. And Mr. Director is back again.
Fill me. Yeah, okay. So whether this goes faster or slower, that'll all depend. So Highcroft Investors have petitioned have 34.4 acres of land, which is parcel 7479. Brian will bring it up in a second. We've had it up a few times tonight, so if anyone can find it, give us just a minute. There you go. That's the whole parcel. It's currently zoned RA and RA2 is to be reclassified as CMUC CZ, which is a conditional zoning district. Property is located along US 64 Business at the intersection with Eubanks Road. It abuts Chatham Park's PDD and will largely mirror the neighboring property in terms of land uses and and density. Eubanks Road extension actually is that dashed and dotted line going through there. It is a proposal of the extension itself. There's a couple of questions about, you know, putting a road in that overhead power line corridor, but we'll work that out at a future date. But anyway, this current proposal is a little bit unusual in the sense that it's broken up into CMUC CZ1 and CMUC CZ2. And so what's happening is the sort of orangey looking one on your screen, I'm only going by the color I see in front of me. Is proposed to be a fire department location and a future town-owned park that are included. So this one is a little odd, a little different from the other one. Obviously, I'm going to have the petitioner's backup. But I was going to say in your packet, you do have a picture of the land itself. There's a current conditions map that's also in your packet, everybody following along. And what I was going to say here is this one is different in the sense that I want to go over to the principal use tables. Because the orange area that is on your screen right now is proposed to become town-owned property. It's supposed to contain a fire station, EMS station, public park or a recreation facility. A future transit stop, potentially an outdoor theater or amphitheater of some sort and a potential farmer's market. Those are the proposed uses for the land that will be transferred to town ownership. Now, you go over to the yellow part, which has a super wide buffer on it and an awful lot of things. What you're going to see is a list that's remarkably similar with a lot less of a health vibe and a little bit more of a slightly different vibe. There is a research laboratory here, which is a little, you know, slightly different vibe than that. Warehousing and distribution needs a special use permit, but please remember you have a couple of highways here. So the ability to store things and to move them quite easily sort of comes into this. Going over to the actual charts, which are the actual conditions of this rezoning. Let's let's just hit a few of the high points. If I may. And we do have some speakers in the audience who have some very strong feelings, so I'm going to yield to the petitioner fairly quickly. And then I'm going to have a seat while the two public members are speaking about this. So you have a 100-foot wide right-of-way running through the property that will be dedicated for a road that will run between US 64 and Axe Chapel Road. Which is the Eubanks Road extension. That's that dashed dotted thing there with the two arrows. Let's see, two-lane section of road within 700-foot right-of-way will be constructed in connection with development of CMUC CZ2. All subject to the town and NC DOT approval if applicable. Proximal location of Eubanks Road extension is shown on the rezoning exhibit with this rezoning application with a final location to be determined in accordance with best engineering practices and as approved by the town of Pittsburgh. Eubanks Road extension is to be a town street or by NC DOT if the street is going to become state-owned, state-maintained. That is a question mark. Okay, now. Maximum number of residential units proposed for the property is 140. Non-residential square footage is 100,000 square feet and there's a table for for the setbacks. Permitted uses, we went over for a second. This recreation piece in particular is important to the town because it is going to be a significant town park. But obviously, it needs to be dedicated in this particular way. The property to be donated to the town, applicant's going to donate CMUC-CZ1, which is the orange one, to the town. The applicant is affiliated with the entity of Chatham Park Investors, the owner of all the Chatham Park Planned Development District. And all the zoning property in Chatham Park Development District is approved by the town of Pittsburgh. Donation of land to the town will satisfy donation requirement for one of the four fire stations that are required by the Chatham Park Master Public Facilities Plan additional element. I want to be super clear, the Chatham Park, when the amount of density and the general layout of Chatham Park were brought up. This fire station is one of the four. We'd like to remind you all that the fire rating of each property here in terms of fire insurance predicates on the idea that as we increase density, we also have more fire stations. One fire station that I passed on the way here is not sufficient to take care of the fire prevention and fire extinguishing needs of the town. So I'm going to be really clear, this fire station and this public park are two big conditions the town is super heavy on. Let's see. Let's see here. It's going to be developed because it is in the water supply watershed WS4 area for the lake. It's going to be developed with a high-density option pursuant to the UDO itself. Let's see what else. And very similar to the last consistency statement, there's one on the back page of this one. Also, a little bit of an interest here is when they held the community meeting, I'm going to shock you all and tell you that there were quite a few people there. You see that their signature is inside of your packet. Forty-three questions were raised by the neighborhood, which are listed in order and enumerated here for you. A description of changes made by the applicant as a result, the community input is here and I'm going to get them to speak about it. And in our case, again, the staff determined it was consistent with the land use plan as it was designated for an employment slash traditional neighborhood infill. And the reason why we felt that it was reasonable in the public interest and will benefit the surrounding community is we were adding a fire station that's needed, a public park and a small amount of commercial space. Some, a mixture of residential uses and potentially some affordable housing. This point, I'm going to yield the floor to the petitioner. And then after that, I would like you all to hear, yes, sir.
Just a question, you, just in general.
Yes, sir, please.
One, do these have to be bundled together? Like, can we talk about CZ1 versus CZ2? Or do they have to be bundled together? They seem discordant with one another. Like, it's one thing to approve a fire station and a park, and it's another thing to to have to approve that with approving something else.
All that thought. This is Nick Robinson.
Yes.
Nick is a, is an attorney who works with Mr. Bradshaw. I'm sorry, partner, is it?
Yes.
Okay, very good. He's a partner even. I'm sorry, I'm I'm having Christmas brain here, it's the outfit. What I was going to say is, the question from Matt was whether or not the approval is for these two together necessarily. And at this point, I'm going to yield the floor to you. Okay, great.
So I mean, they just seem a little discordant with one another. Like, one is asking to approve a fire station, which is expressly necessary, you know, and almost obligatory stuff, and a park, hopefully. And the other one is is something else, our residential units with five units per acre, you know. Is it, can these be looked at independently?
Yeah, so it's a great question. My name's Nick Robinson, as he said. I practice law with Bradshaw Robinson Slaughter and Reiner here in town. And I have a, I have a whole series of little background stuff that I want to go through too, but I can, I can jump into your, your first question here at the beginning. So this is, this is one tract of land that is owned by one owner. And the, the design and the division of this proposed rezoning is as a result of months and months and months of conversations with the town. And those conversations with the town included conversations about what kind of use they would want to put this property to if they were to be able to have it. And also, where else in the town could there be or should there be a, a fire station? It was the town's request. It was the town's request of the applicant that, uh, even though the applicant already had, uh, or Chatham Park already had another site designated for a fire station further south, it was the request of the town that those be switched and that as part of this rezoning, there would be, uh, this six point nine acres of CMUCCZ one donated to the town because that's the preferred place for the, um, for the fire station. And so as a result of those conversations about what's gonna happen with this whole thirty-four acres, um, in connection with the town requesting that the, um, that the donation of land occurred here, we, we put them both together, uh, and, and then designed the requested rezoning so that they would actually function together. Um, and so that's, that's how that came to be. It was really, um, at the, uh, request of the town that it be there.
All right, Randy, do you know where the other fire station was proposed?
Can't speak to where that one was proposed. I can say that there's four and they sort of feel like they're the four sort of pins. But there was a study done as far as response time. I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I can come across on the microphone here, but there was a study done for response time and there was sort of a general location, but the concern with putting it further south is that you're getting into the, um, south area of small, of Southville, small area plan. And I, I just feel like it delays the construction out and which was part of our motivation for getting this site chosen immediately.
Thank you.
This feels more immediate to me, but what do I have?
Um, if I may, then, um, I was just gonna jump in and, and proceed. So, um, so I'm delighted to be here tonight on behalf of the, uh, applicant, Highcroft Investors LLC in this conditional rezoning. Um, and this is an interesting, uh, request because this property is located, um, on the, uh, it has frontage on, um, Business sixty-four and then also there's some surrounding residential. Um, and as the, um, staff has reported, we're, we're requesting, uh, to rezone it in the manner suggested here. CMUC for both sides with different uses allowed on each of the two sides. Um, and so the, the one side, the orange side that you see on the map there, uh, would be dedicated to the town for those limited uses that they hope to put it to. Um, and then the yellow side on the other side would be retained by the applicant and, um, for development for the uses that are separately listed in the application for that portion of property. Um, I do want to give you a little bit of background on the community information meeting. So we had a community information meeting on October tenth. Um, that was very well attended as, um, Mr. Kuhn Tingle said, mostly by folks living on or near Hank's Chapel Road. Um, and it was, it was a great meeting. Uh, it went on for a good while. There was excellent information bought by, uh, brought by this, this group of folks. Um, a terrific group of, of people with, uh, genuine concerns that were brought forward. Um, we listened really carefully that night. Um, and very shortly thereafter, within a couple of days, um, we made five very significant revisions to what we had originally thought to propose in order to accommodate the concerns of those nearby residents. And I just want to enumerate those to you. Uh, the first one was that we reduced the proposed residential density from what we had, which was a maximum of five hundred and fifteen dwelling units, down to a maximum of a hundred and forty dwelling units. So basically reduced it by close to four hundred units. And that was in direct response to their concern about the possibility of traffic issues on Hank's Chapel Road. The next one was, we reduced the proposed non-residential portion from a hundred and fifty thousand square feet down to a hundred thousand square feet. Uh, we removed, um, a, uh, two uses from the, um, the yellow portion there, uh, which were dwelling multifamily, meaning apartment buildings, um, and dwelling manufactured, um, as proposed permitted uses. So we took those out. Uh, so, uh, the last two things we did was we enhanced the proposed landscape buffer along, um, Hank's Chapel Road from a buffer type E to a buffer type C, which is a significantly thicker and more opaque landscape buffer for the benefit of those people driving down, uh, Hank's Chapel Road. And then the fifth change that we made was we added a proposed condition that no lots will front on Hank's Chapel Road and individual lot driveway connections to Hank's Chapel Road will not be allowed. So any lot that has, um, any kind of, uh, touches Hank's Chapel Road, you're only gonna be able to access it from inside the neighborhood. You're not gonna be able to leave directly out onto Hank's Chapel Road and go either direction. Um, we, uh, advised the, the Hank's Chapel Community Group, the folks that came to the meeting in writing of those changes to the application, um, that we made. And they responded by email through, uh, Mr. Hewitt, who's here. I'm sure you'll hear from him in a minute, who is, um, their designee for the group. Um, and that email thanked Highcroft for the changes and offered that those five changes, and I'm quoting here, "all go a long way in alleviating our concerns for the neighborhood," end quote. Um, Robbie Oldham is here, um, from Withers Ravelinale, and in a few minutes, he'll, he'll take the podium and, and give you a brief overview. But before he does that, I, I did want to offer the following. As you all already know, um, seen many of you here before, um, there are kind of two basic parts to your review of the application. The first is making sure that the rezoning factors that are identified in the UDO and the town's rezoning application form can be met. Um, and your staff has reviewed those factors. We put in an extensive discussion of all of those factors and your staff has concluded, um, that those factors are met. Um, so I'm not gonna repeat all of those. Um, although I'd be happy to answer any question about any one of those factors. Um, but of course, the most important of those factors for your consideration is whether or not the proposal is consistent with your comprehensive land use plan uh, for the town of Pittsburgh. And this, this is, uh, uh, an interesting, um, uh, factor here because this particular piece of property is unlike many other in that on, on your future land use map, it's cross-hatched to be designated for two different kinds of, um, uh, zones under the comprehensive plan. One is an employment center and the other is traditional neighborhood infill. And the reason why, um, that was done, I believe, is that it's, it's a property that is both fronting on Business sixty-four, which would make it a good property for an employment center, but it's also, uh, got some residential uses around it, which would make it a good candidate for traditional neighborhood infill. Um, and so the, um, the land use plan, uh, or the comprehensive plan is pretty, um, pretty clear on what it means, um, for, uh, traditional, uh, neighborhood infill. I just was pulling up the definition here. Um, traditional neighborhood infill districts are found adjacent to downtown, check, and in a proximity to new planned mixed-use, uh, activity centers like Chatham Park. Uh, traditional neighborhood development is encouraged in these areas. Typically, TND areas are designed in a way that replicates historic development patterns found in American towns and includes compact design with a variety of housing types and uses, pedestrian-oriented building and the street design, short block lengths and public space or civic use anchors. Um, and that's exactly what the, the yellow part of this would have in it. And then, um, when you scroll down to employment center, um, and get that, employment mixed-use, the comp plan defines that as areas designated on the future land use plan as locations for primary employment and economic development opportunities. Um, and so this, this proposed rezoning, um, again, we've scaled down all the hundred uses or so down to ones that would seem like it would make sense and are meaningful here. We reviewed all of that with the town. Uh, the town has given its imprimatur and seal of approval on the scaled-down, um, list. And, um, we think it's very clear that this proposed rezoning is entirely consistent with the comprehensive plan, particularly considering, um, this land is designated for both employment center and for, um, for, uh, traditional neighborhood infill. Um, so the second component of your review and recommendation is, has to do with ensuring that the proposed conditions that would be applicable to this rezoning are satisfactory to the town and to the applicant. And glad to report to you, and I'm sure you already know that the staff has reviewed those conditions in great detail. We've gone through and, and we fixed everything to their satisfaction and to the satisfaction of the applicant. Um, and so, um, hopefully, um, that anticipates some of the questions that you have about the project. Um, and so I want to now ask Robbie to come up and give a little bit more detailed explanation of what's happening with, with the map there. And then after that, I know there's a few folks from the public that would want to speak and, and I'm happy to entertain any, any questions that you may have for us about. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Okay, I'll, I'll be quick on this one. Um, Robbie Oldham again, Withers Ravelinale. So in front of you, it's really the same, Matt, we looked at with the Womble rezoning, but I think my only point, I've just got a couple of points, I'll be quick. Um, is with Chatham Parkway, again, I'm gonna talk about that really to the south. So we talked about Chatham Parkway to the north, which Chatham Parkway to the south. Um, is the DOT project R fifty-nine sixty-three. Um, that project is going under construction next year. And I can't remember mentioning it or not, but, you know, basically from Christian Village, where it exists today, all the way down to fifteen five oh one south. Earlier, I was talking about kind of what I would say Chatham Parkway north. This is gonna be Chatham Parkway south, all the way down to fifteen five oh one south. So with that project, um, and it has a completion in twenty-seven, it may be in twenty-eight. I'm not positive on that part, uh, or the latest schedule. But the, all of that right of way is within Chatham Park control of land. So that's one thing, you know, is able to accelerate that project is they're not able to go out there and acquire right of way and go through abandonment, anything like that. They're getting all of the property right of way from Chatham Park. It will be a four-lane road built, uh, from sixty-four business into the middle of about South Village. Then it will continue as a two-lane road, be a roundabout and monitor Pittsburgh Road. It then continues two-lane road down to fifteen five oh one. So the reason I'm saying it's just an update is I know when we had the community meeting, there was a lot of concerns, rightfully so. I understand with the traffic on Hank's Chapel Road and things like that. But, you know, really what this is setting up is, say, by the end of twenty-seven, uh, year twenty-eight, you're effectively gonna have a, I hate, I don't wanna call it a bypass, but almost a Chatham Parkway loop from fifteen five one south to fifteen five oh one north. That will be one of the, you know, the primary north-south corridors. The other, if you look at the town CTP, CTP project, uh, transportation plan, you know, sets up Eubanks Road, so that will be another, um, a north-south corridor. Um, and we can talk about Eubanks Road here in, in just a second. But, um, if you'll go to the next exhibit, Brian, please, sir. Yeah, so Randy's already read off the condition on that and it describes as far as Eubanks Road. This road, this is gonna be subject to DOT and the town of Pittsburgh. We have looked at a conceptual alignment. That's what that is, a conceptual alignment. This roughly matches the town CTP project or, you know, plan, if you will. You know, and that's the way it works. You have a CTP plan out there identifies these corridors. Then you go take it to the next step. Okay, where does it actually go? Does it go on this side of the creek? Does it go on this side of the creek? You know, so this from here would connect Lucius Blain Road. We just did a conceptual on this. We've got a condition in there and it's, you know, we've worked with the attorneys on that. Uh, this will be up to the town and DOT. I mean, this is, this will be their road. However, with this rezoning, the applicant, which is unusual, is committed to dedicate a hundred-foot right of way and building a two-lane section of that road. You know, so you could say, well, you can't develop, well, you could develop this without building that road. I mean, so that, they have committed to doing that. Um, lastly, the perimeter buffers, uh, Nick talked about them. We have got on this and I think it's in the zoning conditions too, with the, like, the ten, um, twenty-foot perimeter type C buffer on the south, southern border and the eastern border. If that was single-family, single-family, that would be zero per the UDO. We're committing to a twenty-foot type C buffer on that. So again, listening to concerns from the residents protecting that view shed along Hank's Chapel Road. Um, so we went back and said, you know what? You know, if people's single-family, it would be zero buffer, but we're coming into a twenty-foot buffer on that, so. Um, and then finally, I think just kind of if you look at all this, what we're proposing here, I mean, if you look at the density that we were talking about and then the dedication of the fire station site, you're literally looking at a maximum of a hundred and forty dwelling units in a fire station site. I mean, that's literally what this boils down to. So, um, you know, it kind of sets up, I think, you know, where the last rezoning was, hey, density, you know, this is, this is different. The, um, the Womble, we proposed, uh, street sections that was consistent with Chatham Park because it's an extension of Chatham Park. This project, we're using town standards. We're using town standard buffers. We're going above and beyond. Um, but then even the roadway sections, we're using town standards for that. And that's part of just working with staff and saying, the other one is extension China Park. This one, we're using town standards, uh, for that. And that's the, so just to explain some of the reason why we did what we did with the conditions. So that's it.
Thank you, Robbie. Uh, Mr. Hewitt. I understand by what I've heard that you're speaking on behalf of a number of citizens?
I, I, I don't think that I'm particularly a, a leader of the Hank Chapel group. I'm just one member of the community. Uh, there are others that will speak. I tend to be the one that distributes information about meetings, but that's about it.
Hey, let me, let me do a quick timeout. Uh, Jenna or Randall, by virtue of the fact that no one else has signed up, are we still opening the floor for speakers?
Yeah, I still speak afterwards if I may, so.
Okay. Okay, so, so we'll call. Okay, so I was gonna, I was gonna set the time, the time allotment different if you were speaking for the whole group is what I heard. But, uh, if you can, try to keep it to three minutes, please.
Sure. Uh, yes, my name is Mark Hewitt. I live at four twenty-four Johnny Burke Road, right down at the end of Johnny Burke Road, and been there forty years. Um, there's been talk about that the, uh, the area under consideration mirroring Chatham Park. And we wonder why it doesn't actually mirror what's there. The density of housing that we've got on our road. There are only nine houses on our road. And we feel like it should more mirror what we have already than what Chatham Park is imposing on us. And I know Highcroft is a euphemism for Chatham Park and they're wishing to put in our neighborhood a great big development. And we appreciate the fact that they have reduced the number of dwellings from five hundred and fifty to a hundred and forty and the number of commercial square feet from a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. But those numbers that they've come up with are entirely arbitrary and we wonder why they can't be reduced further. That's one issue. The second issue is given their very kind notion that there will be no, uh, roadway access on Hank's Chapel Road. And it seems because of the way the traffic flows on sixty-four business that all the access is gonna be on the little short Eubanks Road extension. Um, but it's a very peculiar shaped piece of property and it's gonna be extremely congested when you're bringing property, uh, bringing traffic out onto that little Eubanks Road. So, uh, it's my opinion, and I haven't discussed this with any other members of the Chatham County Commu-, uh, Community Group, uh, Hank Chapel Community Group, that, uh, what they're proposing is too big for the road access. And, uh, I would respectfully ask, uh, the planning board to seriously consider the merits of the proposal as it stands and to reduce the number of commercial square feet that is currently proposed and also the number of housing units that is proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Furlotto, would you like to speak again?
I'm speaking on just of the two projects that involve the Hank's Chapel neighborhood, but projects that have already done, been done. I mean, we have the water recovery right there. We now have the substation right there. We're talking about a fire station right there. Two of those, three are catty-corner from my property. It's just, if that's happening here, we really want those, um, those projects to be good neighbors to us and protect us as much as they can from the nuisance that they will be. Um, that's basically what I have to say. Uh, the traffic again is a problem now. It's gonna become a greater problem. Uh, consider dead-ending Hank's Chapel and have the entrance onto Hank's Chapel from Eubanks so that that little piece of land is quieter. And that if we could get the traffic to be quiet all the way to Johnny Burke, that would be really helpful for the entire neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for considering it.
And please, uh, state your name and address.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Hallie Bland, I live at 387 Hanks Chapel Road. I am the little trapezoidal shape that is directly underneath where the proposed fire station will be. My dear neighbors, Town of Pittsburgh planners, and my lovely planning office. I'm here to speak about the fire station, I've never seen a fire station be so closely built to a residential area. Every other fire station I've ever seen be built was well away from all other little residential areas, or in a like the one 15501 South is in a commercial district. I will grant that this lovely free piece of property is in a great location directly across the street from a water plant. It's a great piece of property, as I live right next to it. This is gonna be literally right outside of my back door. I would love to know which one of you would like to live 10 feet outside of a fire station.
Is that a real question?
Yes.
Because actually, the neighborhood I grew up in, they did build a fire station recently in Cary, and it's just literally across the street from quite a few houses.
Oh, I'm talking like 10 feet from your backyard.
Yeah, like, yeah, it's a similar situation.
It is, and do you live there?
My parents still live there.
Okay, and how do they feel about that?
Um, it actually has not been, they were very upset when this was proposed, but it has not been as big of a disruption as they anticipated.
Do they live there full, they don't, they go out, they have jobs outside?
Yeah, and my sister lives in the neighborhood too, and.
See, I'm, I'm disabled, I'm at home all the time, my husband is at home all the time.
My parents similarly are retired, I'm, I'm just wanted to share that experience with you, I'm not discounting your concerns, but.
It's very disturbing to sit and to literally have it right outside your back door. I mean, I understand that people in Cary have it like across the street, bless them, but I would love to invite each and every single one of you over to my home, and I would love for each and every single one of you to walk the property with me, and to see it, and to understand why this upsets me, and to understand why not each and every one of my neighbors is gonna be affected by this. Now, my seven dogs barking and howling at this, that's my problem, but what isn't my problem is how this is gonna affect my daily life. What isn't my problem is that I was blindsided by this on October the 10th by this lovely development. I did not know about this, as a layperson was unaware of this. I went down to the fire station just south of town to ask, and every last one of the firefighters knew about it before the adjoining property owners. Every last one of them. And they laughed, wondering why I didn't know about it, and they asked who from the town planner's office, and who from the mayor's office was it that fell through, that should have told me as a town adjoining property owner that I was screwed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bland. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Yes, Carol.
Hello, I'm Carol Hewitt, I live in the same house with Mark Hewitt. 24 Johnny Burke Road, it's really nice to come and see all of you, I see who's on our planning board. We're in the extraterrestrial zone, as you know, where we don't, you know, vote for the town board, but we get regulated by the town board. So I really, I really only just want to add to what Mark said. We did have a good public meeting, a community meeting with Chatham Park. We did tell them our concerns, they did make that change from 540 to 550 to 140. This is a 20 some acres of land, if they, if they just did the division, that's less than, you know, a fifth of an acre, where the neighborhood, we have five acres on it, and so you can imagine, and then down the street, of course, it's a little tighter than that. But I just want to remind you that when you look at Chatham Park, it's an hourglass. They have, of the 8,000 acres, there's the entire north section, and then it comes in, and there's the south section. There's a little bit left, and this piece of that is a little bit that's left, the Hanks Chapel community, because of the tigers, because of a church, a few things have kept Chatham Park from filling that lot all in, and this little community of ours. As Mr. Schaefer said, what's gonna be left? And to me, neighborhood infill, our neighborhood is small, is homes, you know, is rural, really, still. But because it's contiguous now, it's as if Chatham Park, whatever's contiguous to them, becomes neighborhood infill according to their idea of what a neighborhood is. So again, this is, they, they spent a lot of money on this land. They're not gonna want to put five houses on it, they're not gonna want to keep the zoning that's typical in our area. But, you know, I just, that was their decision, and now it's your decision. Will it be our neighborhood, or will it be more of their neighborhood? That they're, that they're now imposing upon rural Chatham. That little section that, if you drive down Hanks Chapel, there's a lot of bikers, I just want to mention, it's one of the most popular, it's a popular bike routes. People come in from all over the state, as I say, it's used heavily by boats that go down to the, to the lake, and 140 houses, going, residences is still there a lot. And the last thing I'll say in my 20 seconds here is that the Eubanks Road extension that you see, that wavy line, there is a big question mark. Because Duke is having all kinds of issues, there's a lot of issues with that curvy line, they, they're gonna need a right angle in order to take some, take trucks and things, so all of that is a big unknown, and maybe that wouldn't be good to get resolved before this gets approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Yes, Mr. Robinson? Just a very quick response to some of the comments from the, from the public, I would just say that I, I think it's really critically important that we take a hard look at what the comprehensive plan says can and should be done in this area, and traditional neighborhood infill is not five acre lots. If you, if you look at the definition of traditional neighborhood infill, it talks about housing types and uses pedestrian oriented building and street design. I used to try to take my kids trick or treating in five acre lot neighborhoods, and then we'd get to one house and it would be time to go home, because it wasn't pedestrian oriented in any way. And so what, what is being proposed here is, is gonna be smaller lots, pedestrian oriented, and related to the concept where there's a mixed use employment center nearby possibly as well, that you can walk to work, et cetera, like that. And so the, the plan that's been proposed is entirely consistent with what the town says that it wants in this location. And, and, and developers need to be able to rely on the policy documents that the town promulgates before they go out and spend all the time, energy and money designing a proposed rezoning. And that's what they've done here, that's, just wanted to say that. I'm gonna start off, I'd like to make a few comments, really based on Mr. Robinson's last comment. In my, in my opinion, he cherry picked the pieces of the definition for infill that suit high density development. Now, they indeed did reduce from maybe 500 to 140 dwelling units, and if you look at that piece, the piece where the dwelling units are is 27 acres. We lose three or four because of a stream buffer and setbacks, we're down to 22 acres, we're looking at six dwelling units per acre. Whereas the lots on Hanks Chapel right now, I don't know, up towards the 64 West, the west end of Hanks Chapel, they may be less than an acre, but as you head east on Hanks Chapel Road, those are one acre lots to two acre lots. When you cross the little bottom, they then start to morph into two to five acre lots, and then there's a few farms out there as well. I know that they just heard 20 minutes ago that we agreed by majority that the 122 acre previous parcel, we agreed that that met the infill definition as it related to the adjacent Chatham Park. I disagree that this parcel, or these two, I think it's one parcel in two different pieces, meet the definition of infill. If you just look at all around Pittsburgh, if we were to say that that definition was applicable to 64 West, where, where Al's Diner is, or what used to be Al's Diner, if we applied that definition, then we'd be looking at six to 12 to 15 dwelling units per acre throughout Pittsburgh. That's my one comment, the other comment is, fire station, great, we need those, I, I don't think it has to be here, Chatham Park has 8,000 acres. Why they put it next to residential is a little baffling to me. A park, lovely, we need parks, but I've kind of said my piece on this, but let me open the floor to the, to the rest of the board.
I agree with you, Carl, that this is much closer in comparison to the previous, that piece of land was in between two employment areas, so that did make sense to me to become a transitional zone. This parcel abuts directly to yellow, which is, yeah, just traditional neighborhoods. But I do want to point out that the striped area that this parcel is, is employment mixed use, and I'd like to share this from the land use plan. In a few locations on the future land use map, areas are striped as employment slash traditional neighborhood, that's exactly what this is on the map. These areas could be appropriate as employment mixed use or traditional neighborhood infill, depending on the market and the appropriateness of development proposals. So I have a hard time saying that this is inconsistent with our land use map, just because of what the map is and what it says. So just wanted to share that definition.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm kind of sitting between the two and stuff, in that it's less of a transition, right, it seems like a stark difference between, like you said, the, the last place that we, we talked about and stuff, is between UNC and hospitals and, and already developed an area, and this is, it's between 64 and five acre plots, so it doesn't seem like a transition as much as like a stark line, you know, where there's not even brackish water, where freshwater and seawater meet without that kind of.
That is how, that's what the map is like, this parcel abuts directly to yellow, which is residential.
Yeah, but does residential have to be, I think.
It's their land, but residential is their land where they live.
Yeah, I think this is where, yeah, this is where we have to apply our judgment. To me, 64, you know, 64, Hanks Chapel, I believe is the old 64, 50 years ago, but 64 is I think to everybody is a very clear buffer between what's north and the density that's coming therein, and what is south and adjacent to Hanks Chapel, I mean, it's, to me, it's, 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 it's obvious now, I'm just stating my opinion, but. Other comments, thoughts?
So I want to just put on the record how much I appreciate Hewitt's, your, your art and stuff, I've seen it, the new that, you know, the new hotels, we display all your stuff with our you know, new developments and stuff, I've seen it here and there, I get excited whenever I go to someone's house, it's work, I do really appreciate it.
I mean, again, not to belabor this point, but I do have real concerns about having industrial uses on the, on the permitting here, or principal use table.
Any thoughts? Motion?
Think that what they presented is, is consistent with the plan that, that the town has laid out in the future land use plan, and I think that it's our job to be consistent with that.
I wish we could put this map there, so everyone.
Yeah, is there any way, do you have?
Can you pull up the GIS?
Cause looking at it, it's, it's surprising.
About to get it on the screen.
Great.
And about a second. Containing on the internet speed here. Ready to read the definition in full again, once we get the map.
Sure.
Working on.
It's hard, because I hear all of you and understand where you're coming from. But this is the map.
While they're, while they're pulling the map up, Charity, would you go ahead and read the complete definition again of the, the infill?
Employment mixed use is, is a larger section, but I'll read specifically for the striped area, in a few locations on the future land use map, areas are striped as employment slash traditional neighborhood, these areas could be appropriate as employment mixed use or traditional neighborhood slash infill, depending on the market and the appropriateness of development proposals as decided by the planning board and or board of commissioners. And traditional neighborhood infill is what we were discussing on the last proposal, it's not RA, it's not large lot neighborhoods. It's, it's more of a mixed use style neighborhood.
Okay, we have the map in front of us. Actually trying to.
At pedestrian driven small scale office.
Yeah. Okay, so, if you'll collapse that table, you take a look, that is the area that's the employment mixed use slash TND. It encompasses the entire area. You know, I kind of hang my hat on the words in the definition could be used for. And when I, when I see the location, and, and I know that area very well, to me, this is not the appropriate use for the could for, or could be. There, I can see some places that might fit that. I'm just not, I'm not there with this one. But, you know, that's, that's my opinion. Other comments? Thoughts?
Being technical, every time I get into discussion about previous uses and current uses, I would like to remind you all that we're probably sitting and or standing on the location of a teepee or two, and certainly there was a great number of things that were here before us, and yet I'm standing in a building that is an example of architecture that is nestled in the woods, so let me say, part of the purpose of the future land use plan, which if it's not my misunderstanding, was approved by this planning board, maybe not these members, but this planning board. This particular land use was anticipated by the plan adopted in April of last year. I want to be super clear, I was working here when this plan was adopted, and it was adopted with the blessing of this planning board, with this particular set of uses shown on here. This is not something that we as a staff got together with coloring pencils and put together after the fact, this is the actual land use plan that was adopted by the town. So with that in mind, the idea at the time was this was the future uses anticipated for this site. And I want to be clear that if at that time, the intention was never to put an employment mixed use center there across the street from a warehouse that exists over here, anybody with a pointer, just take it up to Eubanks, to this up, which would be north right, no, no, I'm talking about the actual, there you go, right there on the left side of the screen. No. I'm simply pointing out, if you turn on the aerial, you'll see that there's an existing industrial building.
Four, five.
Yes, sir. You get rid of the land use plan, I think you're gonna find that the existing site contains industrial building. If you roll up on that site, which in this aerial is not that, but if you roll up on the site right now, there's a very large warehouse. But if you roll up on the site right now, there's a very large warehouse on that corner piece. Yeah. If you go there right this minute, which I will go by there on my way home tonight, there is a building standing right there whose use is virtually identical to what you will see as proposed for this. So there was an anticipation of this growing down into this site. Regardless of how it was addressed for the neighbors, which is the part of the story I wasn't here for. Want to be clear, but if this were to be declined and they decided to let it go back to fully wooded, you still have an industrial site across the street.
And then I'm gonna tell you, as bad as I feel that Mrs. Blain wasn't notified when she should have been notified. I can't say that I would be happy. I would be in her five percent, I probably wouldn't be happy as well. But it is still our job as a board to follow the rules. What? Why would we make, why would rules be made and then we decide we're going to do what we want to do anyway? And that's just not how the world works. If the rules was made, and we had to follow the rules. It's just like, I can't decide I want to make up my own little rule. I can't do that. I still have to follow what the planning board rules are, whether or not I like it or not. I still have to follow the rules.
And going to the staff report, I can certainly tell you all that over the last 18 months, I have consistently differentiated between my personal feelings and the statement that is contained here, which is that this proposal satisfies criteria that's outlined in the UDO. And it is also my best interpretation based on professional judgment, the, the way that the land use plan anticipated this going. So I'm going to certainly tell you that if I just dropped out of a airplane with a parachute and landed here and had this plan to read for three and a half minutes, I would say, oh, mixed use. Neighborhood infill, got it. And that's what I would anticipate in my mind. I'm going to say, staff's job is not to go and meet with these developers, highcroft investors or whatever their name is in, in your minds. It's not staff's job to go over and say, hey, this is what you need to do with your land. Staff's job is to take that drawing and say, hmm, does it match the drawing? Probably. Therefore, staff's recommendation is seems to match the plan. That's what we're going to recommend.
This is next.
Yes, sir.
I agree entirely with what Frida said. And I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of AB 24511 as presented.
We have a motion from Cory for approval of the 24511 as stated.
I'll say it.
And a second by Frida. Further questions, discussion from the board? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, which Cory, I, I assume you that can, that includes the consistency statement, correct?
It does.
Okay. All in favor of the motion included with the consistency statement as stated by Cory? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. In that case, definitely need to do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Jen to stipulate who voted opposed, who voted for. So we have to have it for the record.
Okay, so please raise your hand if you are in favor of the motion. Okay, in favor of the motion is Frida, Cory and Charity. Please raise your hand if you are opposed to the motion. Opposed is Carl, Matt and Alan.
It's like a tie.
We have a tie, so the motion was not approved based on that. And we are one shy of our full membership, but that's, that's the, we have a quorum, so that's the facts. Okay. So that information will go forth to the commissioners that we had a tie vote tonight.
Got it. Thank you very much.
I think it'd be helpful if we could ask the, some to state the reasons.
Okay.
Well, I voted no, like very clearly why.
Okay, start with you, Alan.
I mean, I still have concerns. I mean, I understand that this looks like it's in alignment with the land use plan, but it just, to me, it is a completely different situation than what we voted on before. And I just, it does not make sense to me, especially having the potential for industrial uses there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I showed that kind of the same statement and stuff. I think that there is, there's a difference between as you get closer and as you get to areas that are already developed and more dense and stuff. And I think this is less of a transition and.
And, and, and mine and Jen are very much the same as, as those two. Like to thank everybody else in the public that came out to speak for this item tonight. All right. Okay, we are moving into department updates or direct.
Sorry. We amended the agenda, so we need to go back to the.
Do elections first, yeah.
Okay.
And it's, is the election officer just going to take place, or like it's going to start effective January 1st, 2015?
Okay, thank you. Yep, I, I, I thought we were going to do it at the end, but it doesn't matter to me. Okay, we need to elect new officers. I'm, I'm hitting the road. So do we have anyone, any motions for the position of chair?
I nominate to elect Cory as chair.
Yeah, we have a nomination for Cory for chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there, okay, we have a motion and second for Cory. Are there any other nominations for chair? Uh, Matt, sorry. Charity, Charity nominated, Matt seconded. Are there any, any other nominations for chair?
I nominate myself, but people don't really care for me, so.
I think you did nominate yourself.
Frida, I'll second that nomination.
But you were serious, you wanted to nominate?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Cause people don't really care for me to my, my.
Well, I didn't understand really how you wanted to play that. Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a nomination from Frida, for Frida, and a second by Cory. Okay, are there any other nominations?
I don't know if there's any interest, but I just want to state this for clarification. If the vice chair was nominated, then we would turn around and have an election for the vice chair as well.
Repeat that, please.
If Charity was nominated, we would, so we'd have the chair election and then we'd turn around and have the vice chair election.
But in this, in this case, it's not, so we're just voting for the chair.
Yes, and I share that I'm, I'm out of here soon. I think I don't have much time left, so I think this will just like keep it cleaner. Yeah.
Okay. Now that I'm thoroughly perplexed. I want to ask both, both of, both Frida and Cory, should you not be elected as chair? Would you be willing to serve as vice chair?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, yeah, it's fine.
Okay. All right, we still have two nominations for chair. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Do we, do we do this by paper, Jenna?
Just raise your hands.
Okay, okay. All in favor of the nomination for Cory for chair, please raise your hand. Okay. And did you get all those? Okay. And opposed? Okay. So Cory will be our new chair. I probably the most, I think official way to do this Frida, is to have a, just to have an official nomination for you as vice chair.
There's no need, if everybody's already voted for Cory, there's no need of that.
But we need a vice.
Charity's going to continue on this.
Still continuing.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
The remainder of the term.
I'm sorry. Okay, I told you I was confused. Okay, thank you Cory and Frida for stepping up to offer your services and congratulations to Cory. Does she take over now?
No. Next, I have an item. Do you have an item, if you all don't mind? All right, for, instead of a staff report, which I really don't want to do tonight, I did want to make sure that you did not go, Mr. Schaefer, without a certificate of appreciation from the staff of our department. I want to present this certificate to you in recognition of your meritorious service, your dedication, your commitment to the town of Pittsburgh's planning board. Your thoughtful contributions and steadfast leadership have been instrumental in shaping the vision and the growth of our community. And while you are departing this board, you are not departing our hearts. And I do appreciate your service to the town.
Thank you. Say it's all been fun every minute, but that's not necessarily.
Don't, don't, don't guilt the loop. Thank you so much, I appreciate your help. Oh, and you may keep that.
Oh, wow.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Okay, do you have other, other updates for us, Randall?
What I have for Christmas, Merry Christmas to you all.
Okay, board member comment period. This is for any, any and all of us to speak your mind. Cory?
Thank you guys for putting your faith in me to, to run these meetings. Carl, I'm definitely going to have questions.
I'm retired.
For you along the way. You will, maybe you'll forget that you did give us all your email.
Yes, I do.
And please, if I, if I can offer anything, I'm glad to.
I will be, I will take advantage of that. I'm certain of it, just with, just for advice along the way. And then I'll then have to ask for everyone's patience as I kind of figure out running these meetings as well.
Lean on the staff heavily too.
Absolutely.
Yep. Charity, any?
Um, no, I think it's been a great year. Thank you. And for each and every one of you is appreciated and all opinions are welcome and necessary and valued, so.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you everyone for showing up and speaking your mind.
Alan, any?
Yeah, I mean, this is my second meeting, but you know, I really do appreciate the dialogue we're having here, the fact that, you know, we are listening to each other and, and able to do this in a very professional manner. So and Merry Christmas to everybody.
And Matt?
All right, I love being here, the civic engagement, I love Pittsburgh and stuff. So being able to help discuss the development of Pittsburgh and stuff is paramount.
And Frida?
I'd say everybody, Merry Christmas.
All right, thank you. Okay, I think we have, need a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Cory? Second by Alan, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Good. Thank you all.